What matters, Chris, bringing everybody up to date. We don't have a formal agenda today. We want to talk about a few things. One of the subjects we're going to talk about just came up the last couple of days. It's kind of a crisis at our seniors center. And Angela pitched in and helped out today, and I appreciate her volunteering to fulfill a role that wasn't fulfilled. And we were needing some workers. And Ms. Brenda's going through a kind of a help crisis with her husband, and every day doesn't have a sitter for him. So we're looking at NACOG workers versus city employees. And that's kind of, I want to talk about the advantages and disadvantages. These people under NACOG rules, I believe, were limited to a certain amount of income. The workers that fit the bill for them were kind of hard to find. What we would need if we were doing it through the cities is part-time workers that would get, how many hours a week would a person working at seniors?
Nineteen or twenty. If, under the city, I'm assuming it would be the same if it's on the NACOG side. I don't know that for sure.
You got any ideas about a solution to this you want to lay on the table for us today? You got any ideas at this point of what you think might work?
I think the problem Brenda keeps running into is there's people that are wanting the job, but on the NACOG side of it, they don't qualify. Whether they make too much money, maybe they draw a certain amount of money, or they're not the right age requirement for NACOG. And I'm not exactly sure what those requirements are. But that's what she keeps running into, that they don't qualify for one of those reasons. You know, whereas on the city side, we could, if we hired somebody, we could just hire somebody and not put a restriction on age or income for that.
How long do you think this crisis is going to go on? We can't always allow you to break free and go, and you're going to have days when you have lots more than plate and serving meals and this kind of thing.
I think she had some folks out, maybe there was a jury duty, or, I don't think this is an everyday situation for them, but today it would have been just Ms. Dubilak in the kitchen, and then Ms. Stewart is actually out in the van delivering the meals. So it would have just had Ms. Dubilak there by herself. And, I mean, she could have done it, but it would have been really hard for her. And Brenda didn't have a sitter, so she wasn't able to be there today. So, I mean, she's there, but still, I mean, there really needs to be another person. I think she, she just lost somebody recently that quit. So I know she's short that one. Generally, there's probably three people.
One that quit was actually a city worker, right? We paid her.
We did.
Don't you think we at least could replace that one?
Yes.
And try to get her other help from NACOG?
Yeah. Because I think she's had several that she could probably choose from.
Well, how do we, do we, now, that's an extension of the city, I guess. Do we normally post that job? Hey, come in.
We'd have to post it if it's a city job.
Oh, yeah, Tracy?
I mean, it'd be like the recreation center or anything else if it's a part-time city job.
Why don't we, why don't we get that on our Monday night agenda? This, this is critical, in my opinion. We need to get that job posted. And try to get someone hired to help Brenda. Converse with her and see if one helpers what she's needing from the city side.
I know there, she was looking at two. There was going to be one from the NACOG side, and then we lost one from the city side. So I think NACOG is going to try to get her two people, but...
I haven't been able to.
No. So, so I'm going to say at least two people is what she's going to need. If we could get one on the NACOG side and one on the city, that would help her quite a bit.
Let's, let's try to post whatever she's going to need Monday night. Monday nights, maybe. I appreciate you helping out today.
You're welcome. I enjoyed it, but I'm going to tell you something, those ladies work hard.
She was working hard.
I was breaking my sweat.
Watched, she had a little hair thing on.
He looked at me like, "I think I'd love to be that person."
She might have been disguised, if you're trying.
That's right. I'm like Santa Claus, you never know where I'm going to show up.
What are the hours?
Uh, today I work like eight to twelve.
So that'd be twenty hours a week, and that's still...
Yes.
That's not over the overtime?
No.
We met our deadline today to get our fireman's cancer policies and long-term disability. And when we say long-term disability, this is a thirty-six-month benefit, up to thirty-six months. I believe three thousand dollars a month is what the person withdraw on disability, if they're disabled from cancer. I'm, don't hold me to this, but it's, it's a long-term disability policy that pays three thousand dollars, up to thirty-six months, and a twenty-five thousand dollar cancer policy for each certified fireman, at a hundred ninety-eight dollars a year, which will cost us fifteen hundred eighty-four dollars per year for those two coverages. We tried to put this out to local bids, but the agencies here didn't have time to get a comparable policy quoted for us this year. We're going to give them another opportunity next year. And if they can meet or beat this price, we may buy it local next year, but we'll do it through the state recommended company for the first year. And we're not buying any for our part-timers that work part-time and volunteer for our firemen. They won't be prohibited from having this, but it'll be at their expense if they, if they get it for this first year. So, we bought today, or, for eight people, got their names. The lady that's handling it from their side and the company side will send back to get their beneficiaries and that kind of stuff from us. So, we've met the deadline at least and got her name submitted today.
You said three thousand dollars a month?
Yeah. That, that'll be the disability, as long as they're off on disability from the sickness. The fireman will draw three thousand dollars a month from the disability policy. If they weren't off thirty-six months, of course, it would stop when they returned to work.
Thirty-six thousand dollars a year?
No, it's good, it's this much a year. That's what we're paying. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about what they draw.
How much they draw?
It's a good benefit.
Yeah, it's a good benefit.
Yeah. I think just about everybody that took this insurance went with the state's recommendation, and I think that's why we're getting it at such a reasonable rate. Good coverage for, for these men, and I'm proud that we were able to do it for them. In my opinion, a good bill was passed here that helps us look out for our, our own. I think it's a good thing. We beat this old horse a lot, and we're going to beat it some more today. With y'all's permission, I wanted to bring back to us, and Rodney was able to be with us. He was, he had some family issues last time we talked about this, and we didn't get to fully discuss it, but I've asked him to get as much information about this subject as he could bring us to the table today. He watched our replay after he got in a position to from the last discussion we had, and that was on our wastewater rates and also our water purification, our water customers. We talked about Rodney's supplement that the city does, where he's not on a breakeven plane yet from income side. His income and expense doesn't balance, so we were looking at trying to get him closer to a breakeven, if possible, through some adjustments in our sewer and water rates. Rodney, if you would just kind of lay out what you found out about it and let us ask questions as we go along, I'd like you to take a part of the program right now and talk about it. You and I talked about a couple of things this morning, but if you want to bring those up, you can. If you don't, just, whatever your presentation is, you know your business better than we do.
Well, start off with a little history. I believe it was three years ago, y'all voted to do like a ten percent rate increase in water rates. That was the first increase the water department had had in over twelve years. And with that being done, three years ago, it puts us right at now, fifteen years, we've had one ten percent rate increase. And that's, that's not a lot of increase when you, when you stop and think about it. I, I've checked with other systems, a lot of them do, some of them do a two percent rate increase every year. Every day you wear, they do a two percent rate increase. That keeps them up with the rising cost of chemical expense and everything else involved with it. I, I kind of put some numbers together as far as different amounts of rate increases. I think I went over with y'all one time about the sewer rates and what we, of course, our sewer rates are fifty percent of whatever the water bill is. The sewer rate is fifty percent of that bill. I ran some numbers as far as doing like a, I think I talked to y'all before, like doing a sixty percent, or sixty percent on residential, eighty percent commercial. And I did those numbers based on years of what the numbers I had to work with. Doing that would increase the sewer revenue about, close to eighty-five thousand dollars a year. That would be the increase, if we did sixty, eighty. A lot of systems do a hundred percent, whatever the water rate is, that's what the sewer rate is. Sewer is where you lose most of your money. You can ask any municipality in the state, they'll tell you they lose money on sewer. It just costs so much to, to operate it. As y'all are aware, my power bill, where all, everything in the water department runs right at about thirty-two thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars a month. About twelve thousand of that is the wastewater treatment plant. About eleven thousand of it's a water treatment plant. That's every month. The rest of it is our lift stations, pump stations, and all that. But that, and that's a cost we can't really cut. I mean, it's, it is what it is, and that's what we have to pay. We've looked at ways of cutting that cost a little bit, but there's not really a whole lot you can do. And that's, that's just part of it. I mean, when you have a plump or blow or something go down, you have to fix it. We don't have a choice. We have to keep things going. Of course, that, you know, I, I put money in my budget every year for, for...
Well, do you have air demand? Could you tell us how much you're going to lose this year, all probability on sewer and water? How much the cities don't lose? How much money?
I don't have those numbers right now. I will have after this month's over.
Yeah. You're going, yeah, it's going to be a lot, isn't it?
It'll be quite a bit, yeah.
And I, I think we really need those numbers for everybody to be satisfied with raising it a good bit, to make them up. I hate to sit here and guess at what I'm doing without knowing, you know?
Yeah.
Because this has been going on for years and years. I've always earned, never saw the figures, but I'm sure it was true that we've lost a lot of money on sewer and water. Well, that's just pretty well uncalled for, because if you get it on up there pretty well what it's costing us, and you're passing it on to the people that's really using it and wasting it, you know, you know, well, they'll start kind of watching out how much they use, wouldn't you think? I know I do, even on gasoline sometimes.
And that's the biggest thing, is, you know, we, we've been in this rut so long, you know, we're not having increases over the past fifteen years, you know, that it set us back so far. And we have to, we're going to have to try to catch up at some point.
Well, it's just like roads. You can't keep on running this business and losing money on, you start with the sewer and water, you're going to lose a hundred, two hundred thousand on it, or you get up and you're losing millions of dollars on roads, because you can see what we got into this year, what we've had to spend to try to catch them up, that's been really nothing done in the last fifteen years. And we're in trouble on roads, and we're in trouble on this sewer and water, and it's, somebody's got to do something about it. And what I'm looking at, I'm afraid people running for office, just like in other things besides the city, they don't want to raise it because they're afraid it'll beat them when they run. Well, I'm not running tomorrow, and I don't think any of these people are. And, but still, I wouldn't care if I was running, I would still vote to try to catch it up. You can't, you can't keep going that way. You just, you can't do that. What, if I did that, I, I'd have to move into the housing project if I'd done that on my own business, is what I'm saying. It just can't happen. Now, anybody running for office, it's, it's, you know, it...
And I, and I've ran some different numbers, if we do, you know, like a five percent rate increase, ten percent rate increase, and that, those kind of numbers, you know, sewer versus water rates, you know? And there's lots of different ways to do it. You know, naturally, if you, if you raise your water rates, when, when you raise water rates, the sewer rates are going to go up because it's half the water bill.
Right.
And, you know, you're kind of working two things at one time if you do water rate increases versus just sewer rate increases.
But if we, excuse me, go ahead.
Just like Rodney and I were talking about this morning, Gene, when, when Brenda from Allen Captral's office came down here, Brenda Cole, this month, she did the figures, she said put eighty thousand dollars over in the water department's account. Well, that meant the general fund wrote him a check for eighty thousand dollars this month and put it in his account to balance him out. Well, Rodney explained to me if his bills could be paid over the whole month, they'd collect money in a few days to cover some of that, but at the time she looked, and with the bills we were paying that were about to be mailed out, we needed eighty thousand dollars put over in that account. So, it's just...
Well, you just don't run a business that way. I don't know.
Rodney, Rodney don't want to have to take eighty thousand dollars from the city to run his department. He wants his department to be more self-sufficient. That's not his goal, it's to bleed the city. And it's just, it's just the way it is right now, and we've got to do something to fix it. And I don't mind get, just tell him what numbers you want at the table, and he'll bring them, and so we can make a decision. But I want to bring it back today to let him be here to, for y'all to hear him, and if you'll tell him what you want to see in order to be willing to vote on this, he'll bring it and put it on the table for you.
And, and one other thing I'd like to mention that I've been working on, uh, we do some wholesale water, Marion County Water and Hewitt. Those contracts come up in April of 2020, so they'll be coming up this next year. We, we did have a ten-year contract with them up to this point, and that ten years will be up in 2020. And also, in order to figure out if we need to adjust that when it comes up, I've asked Allen Captral, me and Allen have been barking together on getting figures of what it's costing us to produce water. We're, Allen said, I talked to him this morning, we'll have those numbers probably Monday or Tuesday next week. And that would give me more to go by on, you know, what we're looking at, the whole picture.
It's just not good business to keep going on in the rut we're in, and, you know, whether there's an election coming up or any other matter, it, that doesn't take precedent over running the city's business the way it should be run. I mean, I...
But you know what I'm talking about. It does take precedent.
I know.
People that's running don't want to make people mad.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
It's a very good time to do this.
We, we're not, we're not being unreasonable in any way. As Rodney says, for fifteen years here, we've had one increase of ten percent on the water rates and didn't adjust the sewer rates at the same time. And most cities are getting eighty percent for commercial at least, and some of them a hundred percent, where we're at fifty percent right now.
Well, the other thing too, see, all our employees have had to have raises all the way back through all those years you're speaking of. And doesn't their salaries come out of the water department?
Yeah.
And sewer, yeah.
Now, he raises his men out of the money they get.
See, there we are, see, more overhead even with salaries, and the city's not getting any more money. You can't, you can't keep on...
And that's where I'm working with Allen, you know, doing this whole thing to see what it's cost, what it's costing us to produce water.
Right.
That, that covers everything. Salaries, insurance, fire bills, everything.
And then compare that with what you're bringing in. And I, I, there's no question, we're going to have to go up there, there's no question about that.
He's working on showing these numbers up. I just wanted us to lay it up on the table today and see that we would go forward with some projection of improving our situation if he brings the facts to the table, we'd be willing to act on it, at least bring it to a vote. I, I need to get this to a vote and soon, because the problem's not fixing itself, it's, it's a looming problem that'll go on and on and on.
Well, you're going to run into this later on too, if we, if Hamilton keeps going the way it is. You're going to have some more businesses coming in, more houses built, and you're going to have to have more water and sewer, and you've got to have the money too. You may have to have half a million dollars or something to run sewer and water to some big industry if we could get the jobs.
Sure. We'd be willing to do it. And, and the other side of that coin is, what's your capacity on purified water? What are you permitting for right now?
We're permitting it through A.D.L. for two million a day. We're pumping right at a million a day.
Okay. So we got some leeway, and we're selling some water, and, but should we reach capacity, you know, and that would be a problem we'd want to face, but we're depending on the Buddy Hatchie right now for all of our water. We don't have a backup source. If some catastrophe happened and suddenly the Buddy Hatchie had something in it, a contaminant that we couldn't deal with, we don't have a backup right now. And I don't want to be a doomsayer at all, but I'm just saying that's our only source of water. We've done away with all of our wells, we sold all of our well sites. We can't go back to deep water wells. The department that governs water didn't want us dumping from those anyways, I understand it, but we got one source of water right now, and that's Buddy Hatchie.
I'd like to know how the rest of this council feels. I don't want to be the only one saying you're talking about raising the rate. Of course, we're going to have to, or...
Oh, yeah.
And...
Then you're going to fix yourself.
I don't want to...
I'd like to get where we could get even, then save two percent a year. I mean, you're going to have unprecedented breakdown.
Mm-hmm. For sure. Like we've had breakdown here recently or something. I forget how many thousands of dollars you said it cost to repair it.
With Brenda...
We'd be breaking even anyway, I meant regardless.
With Brenda Cole and running those numbers...
Yeah, if we don't do better than that, next year, you go back in the hole again. The next year, you're going again, because it's, it's going to cost more and more every year, because I hope that Hamilton grows that much too, even at that part of it.
When those numbers are on every month, we have one choice, and that's to supplement the water department with a check. She doesn't say you might need to put that, she says you need to write the check and put it in their account. So that's what we do. And it doesn't matter what the amount is, that's what we do.
The people in Hamilton need to understand that when you go up, you know, that you're having to put water in there, and people are paying for it, citizens are paying for that every...
They don't understand you that way.
No, they say, they think it's all the city money anyway.
Rodney and I talked about some things today that, the supplement used to be very large, because he was charged with the bond that bought the water purification plant along with a couple of garbage trucks, maybe some patrol cars. We don't know what all was stuck in there. Rodney never did get the full answer, but it was all bonded under the, under the water purification. That paid out last year, and that reduced the amount that the city has to supplement that department. And we're still having to do the supplement, and that's what, that's what we're talking about here today. I just want everybody to be willing to bring it to a vote. If it's a reasonable thing, I think we should do it. And what's reasonable to me is making sure that we're getting the cost of our purification, we're putting that in the backs to make a determination, and then we negotiate our contracts with the people that we sell water to, based on those same facts. And if everybody's willing and consent to him moving forward with that, we'll bring more facts. We won't do it Monday night, obviously, but we'll put our findings in your box for you to study, and then we'll have another briefing on it at one of these meetings, and then we'll make some decisions and bring it up to a vote. But today, I want to at least know that we're interested in moving forward with getting that information. I would tell you, you got something you want to put on the table today?
I got my hat up, Brendan.
All right. You'd say, I'll bid on that hat if you want.
We started using some of that money fixing those streets and paper graps and backs over that we hadn't put into the water department. You know, I, we can start using that money we hadn't put into the water department to fix these streets and things we got you can't out of town.
Gene, we got to find some money for that, that's a necessity.
That will be a part of it when you do that. That money you haven't put in there, it goes.
I'm telling you, that would help a lot. It would help a lot. Tracy?
Yes, ma'am.
We didn't have an agenda today, so...
Actually, it's come by to see you about a project, so she said, "There it works," I said, "Okay."
Bring us up to date on the Montgomery happenings, and I believe there's a big party Saturday, is that correct?
There is, the bicentennial, if any. I'll get to go to the Saturday part, Friday part I've got to miss. Our daughter's finally graduating from all her medical studies.
That's a relief.
Oh, my gosh. And, so, we've got a prison meeting on Monday, and so we're going to say, I'm not on that task force, so this is for the rest of us to go get updated and kind of...
I've been invited. It's at the community support meeting, is that what we're doing?
This is with the Department of Corrections. Commissioner Dunn's coming Monday to Montgomery.
Oh.
And starts, "If you're going, you can just ride with me."
Mine's local. Mine, mine location's local.
So, anyway, we got that. Of course, you and I are working on a particular project here in town that we'll tell everybody about later when we're not on the record, and kind of catch everybody. I'm supposed to hopefully meet with the folks with DOT in a week or two about the Hamilton project, and see if we can stir up some interest for that. So, we'll see. Of course, I've got to add some more work today, this morning. Of course, I've gotta add some more work today, this morning, done some more work on the Welcome Center. Still optimistic we're gonna pull that off. It's just gonna take some heavy lifting, but we're, uh, I think we've come up with a creative plan that will shoulder, will shift most of that burden to the federal level. I mean, that's all our tax money, don't misunderstand us, but just like you're in charge of looking at your Hamilton money, I'm in charge of looking at your state money. So if we can figure out a way to have somebody else pay the vast majority of the cost and help our county, I think it's a win-win, so we're still working on that. We'll see.
Look, we said you're coming today. Tammy, you got anything you wanna discuss today? Basketball's in full swing, isn't it? And you're a basketball mom. Some ladies are soccer moms, you're a basketball mom. I think we got a good basketball team this year, uh, 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 girls and boys, and our younger kids are showing up as a, a improved team. So, we're hoping that, uh, basketball's gonna be a good thing to watch and handle. I've been being a nurse for the last few days, and Kathy's got a brand-new knee. Well, it's a week old yesterday, and we've been going to therapy, and so far, I'm the, I'm the golfer. I go get her, and I take her, and, so, we're having some fun with it. But she's coming along nicely and got a brand-new titanium knee. I don't know what those cost, but I'm sure I'll hear about it later.
Speaking of basketball, I was at Senior Center today visiting with our senior adults at lunch, and, and I just walked out and took some more pictures of how nice the gym looks. I see things on Facebook every night, our kids are out playing, and, um, so much to be proud of. I wa, I was gonna tell you one thing today, we had to go another route, you know, was trying to get some money, uh, some grant monies to replace our windows at the Senior Center there by the basketball court to make them energy efficient, to hopefully drop our heating and cooling costs. That didn't work out, so we're gonna try something else. So, we'll let you know.
Well, thanks.
That gym there, look at that.
Oh, my goodness, it's beautiful.
The prettiest gyms I've seen.
Well, just the whole facility, I mean, all the office space, the senior adults, the kitchen, everything, it's great.
Wade, you got anything to bring to the table today? We were sad for your loss.
Well, I want to thank everybody for the flowers and the prayers and the... During the, the time my daddy passed away, so I just wanna thank everybody.
You had a good day, you write that down.
Yeah. He lived a long, good life, I mean, you know, ninety-three years old, so... But, uh, he just, I guess you'd say he just wore out.
Yeah.
And, uh, I just wanna thank everybody.
Just think the mayor's wife has a new knee, your dad's got a whole new body.
All right, right.
He's way ahead.
Yeah.
Herb, you got anything you wanna add today?
Oh, well, good shape, I think.
Meeting was a little brief today, but maybe next time we'll have a better agenda. I've been kinda, uh, figuring out what we're gonna talk about today, but I knew I wanted to talk again about the possibility of moving forward with helping Rodney on his situation. I think it'd be a big help to him if we could make some adjustments and do it pretty soon. Thank y'all for coming.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.